It's just I've not seen it anywhere that says you're not allowed to fly here.
Again, like I say, I'm based on information that you provide to me. So you say that to me again and I'll say it back to you.
Yeah, I know, but what if the information you was given was wrong then?
Again...
So what if I was to say just go out and fly and do it really?
Two things, one the events team will be aware of that and also Police Scotland may actually come and stop you.
Is there anyone I want to speak to just to inform taking a drone up?
Oh, are you through there?
No, just I'll be out in the public, out there, we're just going up around the building.
Alright, okay.
What's the purpose? Just public photography really?
Public what?
Public photography, just interested. So 2.49 gram drone.
Okay, alright, okay. Just a one phone call.
Phone number? Ah, I don't have one. I'll let you see, this is app we use, it's called Drone Assist. So basically, you can see we're right now. Whole of Aberdeen. Nothing there, but...
Just need that and now we've got a bird of prey at Falken. And she's obviously, this is up there.
I mean, I can avoid that if that would help you, but mostly it's just the front I want to get. Just around the front, go up, and then I don't think I'll be going over. Because I need to keep it obviously in my line of sight, but...
Let's see what he says, what's on your list?
Aye, no worries, but it's just...
What a smart looking thing like.
Aye, it's just a little one like... These ones are around 500s. Get ones that go up to a grand though. I had the big DDI ones before, but for stuff I'm wanting to get into like YouTube and so on. 2.49 gram really let you go anywhere.
Either guy in here, he can fix it.
Aye, you get the DDI. I've got one of them, but it's just you've got to stay 50 metres away from people and buildings. Then with the big ones, so under 2.49 gram. Because it's not, it basically weighs as much as a bird really, so it's really light, so... If it was to fail, you know, it's not gonna hurt anyone really, and obviously...
The guy must have been new because he drove it right into the door and smashed it.
I've just gotten this one recently, so I'm still just, you know... I'm pretty good at it because I've had the big ones, but it's just a different weight, so you have to get used to it, you know, it's...
How long does that stay off one of?
Uh, batteries like half an hour each on a battery, but I've got three batteries, so you know, it's... It lasts you quite a while, but it's just, you know, it's different weather conditions also drains the battery faster, but... Yeah, so half an hour mostly, but it's just a tiny little battery there, you know, it's just...
What's that, what about that?
That's it, yeah, so straight in, that's it. It's a 4K camera on it, so it looks good when it goes up. It's a good image you get when it goes in that foot.
Still, we've got Falken, this is next to that one. This is also got eggs.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
There's a guy who bought D in the town, D in the repairs at the time, did he make sure that the Falken was up there?
Yeah, really, going over there, it's, because I'm gonna be standing around a bit there. I've always got to see it, that's one of my odds, you know, you have to have line of sight all the time. Going over there, it's like, I don't know if I'd be able to see it, but also it's just... I'm not trying to go crazy all over place, you know, like... Mostly just the front, because I go up high enough, I can go to 400 feet, so... That's how much I'm allowed to go to, but...
Typically, when the light, you'd proceed, maybe looking through windows or something like that.
I can understand, but... It's mostly just in fog, because it is legal. Alright, how you doing? It's just about taking this up. Just taking a drone up out front. Just public interest, like flying.
All drones must be, must be have a civil licence beforehand, risk assessments, method statements, and prove it by City Council in the public area before doing a drone cap in writing.
But is it an airspace controlled by CAA?
It's making difference, it's public space. Sorry, it's, and the drone flight cap must be offered by, you must, you've got your civil aviation licence. And you've got a bike cap, bike cap, and also written approval by City Council.
I haven't written approval because I'd be on public land.
Doesn't matter, no difference. You're in a built up area.
Built up area, but...
Yes, always a built up area. I do make him rules, like that's just what we're going through.
Okay, but I've looked on the app Drone Assist and it says we are allowed to fly here.
Again, it's great, if put it on, you will quote that or link to that website, it's not a problem at all, but it still needs to get through approval from City Council beforehand.
Okay, so even if I'm standing on a public footpath, I wouldn't be on your land would I?
It's all council land.
That's true, but there's people, you see them flying down Union Street.
They've been given prior approval. For likes of like again, events is going to like that, all that's been done through our events team and prior approval has been done beforehand. So that probably like, you've got to get approval first.
Right, where would I be able to see this in like writing anywhere? Does anyone could see it, like read it?
Off the top of my head, probably going to the civil aviation website for drone like that. But like I say, I've happened to give you my name and email address like that, and I can forward on to our events team who manage that. I'm just passing on information what they've told me.
I don't know, it's a bit weird one because I've not heard anything about this really.
I'm never making rules obviously.
CAA says we can do it really.
Again, what rules I'm going to get from our events team who manage all the drone approval, I'd say get same with the approval, sorry, approval first.
It's just, that's a bit new to me, I've not heard that.
It's okay, it's fine, there's always stuff new that's happening.
Because I could show you on the map.
It's making difference what you're gonna show me, but we're stunned you get written approval first.
But it's just mostly like, you see where they are, so there's nothing there at all that's red or yellow.
Again, like I say, as a matter of point, you show me like that, we're still gonna get written approval first.
Okay, but I wouldn't be working for you would I? If I was doing this, I wouldn't be working for you, so...
No, 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 you can't, it goes for any drone flying.
I've not seen anything like this anywhere, so...
I'm sorry, my knowledge, what I'm aware of is that.
I just, I've not seen that anywhere, so... So anywhere I could possibly see that in writing or on a new website?
My name's Lee Taylor, I'll give my email address and I promise, if you give me the cap, I'll forward on stuff that I'm aware of. But like I say, I'm just based on information that's been passed to me from our events team who manage all drone flying for events.
But that events team wouldn't maybe be working for you then?
They work at City Council, yes.
But I would be somewhere on public...
No, if it's like a Spectre, like that, there's a drone flying through for that cap and it's all being managed through the events team. So they're doing it on behalf of City Council.
I don't know, it's a tricky one that.
Just yourself, yeah.
I've just not seen it anywhere. I looked on a council page this morning and I didn't see anything. I tried finding something, you know...
I'm just based on information that I haven't made aware of from our events team. You can argue all you want, the cap...
I'm not trying to argue it, I'm just, I'm just trying to find, you know, that thing.
One thing here, the cap will not be changing until I get further information from the events team.
Is there anyone from the events team that could speak to or that's out of building?
They're actually based in this building, they're based up at the Al Valley. But like I say, if you give me your name and number, I can pass your number on to them, it's not a problem at all.
So I just plan to get up here and fly really because that's what we're known to do, that's what we're told to do from the CAA, because we get obviously our rules from them.
And now you're saying you're repeating to me and now repeating back to you. We could go on all day.
We can, but it's, it's just I've not seen it anywhere that says you're not allowed to fly here.
Again, like I say, I'm based on information that you provide to me. So you say that to me again and I'll say it back to you.
Yeah, I know, but what if the information you was given was wrong then? So what if I was to say just go out and fly and do it really?
Two things, one the events team will be aware of that and also Police Scotland may actually come and stop you.
Okay, is there any drone officers in Police Scotland like up there? No, no, no.
I don't know.
They might just have the knowledge and be able to tell me my information.
You're welcome to ask me the officers or something like that, like I don't know what officers they've got on site.
Because I've just, I've not heard of this anywhere.
So you've said yes to that?
Yeah, I know, we keep going around circles. I try not to, you know, but it's just, it's just new information to me.
Sorry, I'm just going on information that's been provided to me as well.
So it's just down there?
That's a police officer up there, yeah.
Oh, it's all going to be, we'll find those one out.
Did you ask for me?
I didn't ask for you. I went to the security guard because I was just gonna inform them I was just gonna go up and fly.
The security guard said my name, is it?
I think he was the one that called you, someone called, he went away and called someone, so... Cheers, thank you. I've been told to come here, so I'm planning on flying a drone over just a building. And then there's, I'm meant to be getting like written permission and stuff like that, but I've not heard anything at all about that.
Are you registered?
Yeah, I'm registered with CAA. I'll show you what I've just found.
Have you checked with them?
Yeah, I've checked the zones and everything, and whole of Aberdeen, it's got no red zones, just yellow zones which are basically, you know, be mindful really, so be careful.
I wouldn't see there being a reason that if you've only checked with the organisation and the... Because technically, it's more, it sounds a bit strange, but...
It's the airspace, you know? Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
Can be the control room and the flying, I suppose?
Yeah, 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 so...
And with police technically...
I can show you on the app really, so it's a bit...
I take it the council weren't able to offer any assistance?
Well, they said I had to come up here and just have a chat about it. But they said basically I need written permission from them to fly anywhere in the city.
Who needed a room?
Me, I would, yeah, and I'm just... Just the council in general. I had to write, email them and I had to say where I want to fly and what I'm doing it for, and I was like...
But then the council then said, come here.
Yeah, well, the guy just sent me up here, it was like, oh, Police Scotland are up here if you want to speak to them, so I was like, okay. I could show you the app, so Drone Assist, so you could see, red zone, that's dice area basically, so dice box. But we're, yeah, we're here and there's just, there's nothing, it's just a couple of yellow zones, but that's just be mindful.
What's the yellow zones actually for, you think?
Um, so it's just over anything, so like railways, you know, obviously they don't want you... It's just basically your drone may raise suspicion, but that's...
I can double check with somebody just to be sure. I'm sure somebody had similar question.
I can, I just found this as well. And that's on...
Okay, because obviously if you're registered with...
Yeah, the CAA.
Then they would, they'd hope keep you right as well.
Yeah, and obviously I'm not trying to break anything.
It's supposed to take place in one of the areas that would be like support, it should come down. It's supposed to be, it should like a division, a risk assessment should be taken.
But a risk assessment is just, no.
An adequate level of public liability insurance. Have you ever had a question that should be asked about drones flying in the public area? We are, right?
It's a tricky subject because it's all new really.
Yeah, I mean, he's registered with the licensing for drones, that's why...
No worries. It's usually... Yeah, yeah. Well, it was like from when I checked at home, everything seemed it was allowed, it was legal. Yeah, I can, you're allowed to request to see it and it's on the drone. So it's meant to be displayed on the drone. Yeah, my name, address, everything's on that, so...
Question please, I don't want to give stuff info to a member of the public. He's tweeting about flying drones in the city centre. And my take on it was that if he's registered with the CAA, which he is, his device is marked up with his information as either, as his registration number. Um, but technically shouldn't be any issues if the app that they use indicates that it's not like a red zone like your airport, you know, you're flying outside planes, but... Yeah. I think he's just checking, he's just double checking because the, the end of, who was it, was asking to...
I went, I went to the security first and it was Lee something that came down. I don't remember his full name, Lee. They called someone up and he came down and basically said I'd have to write to them and email them saying why I want to do it. And then I'd get approval, but they were speaking about an actual filming company, I'm just the public, so you know, it's... Oh, it's just want to take pictures of buildings, you know, it's just photography really, you know.
Some of the talk, no. Technically, we don't use airspace, you know, but it's... The app that you have on registration is what should keep it right.
It's like I'm not trying to destroy my drone or break the law either, so it's, you know... Uh, this one, I've just got this one recently. I've had the big ones though, but this is just, I wanted to do more YouTube type stuff, so... 2.49 gram, it basically, you can fly anywhere, you know, it's big ones, it's 50 metres away from buildings and people. I've got, I've got the licence, I've got pilot ID, everything, but...
I don't know if you're flying or flying with safety, but basically, yeah, you have to fly in line of cycle.
Yeah, yeah.
Something to do with it can't be in flight for 400 feet.
Yeah, 400 feet is maximum.
It says about not flying over clouds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's like people that can't quickly disperse really, I think from that area. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. It was just, you know, they just told me to come up here, so I was like, I'll just come check, but... I mean... Yeah, I mean, if someone has, I'll let you know, if someone has one with bigger drones, so over 250.
I think you have to get special permissions.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's 50 metres away from buildings and people, so then, because obviously the weight's a lot. Yeah, the weight's a lot more, but 2.49 gram, because it's under 250, it's basically... It's, they've made it for that reason, you know, so it's, so it's legal and...
Yeah, you know, you kind of know, but you like that reassurance.
Yeah.
And I'll say, I form the sergeant that's overseeing the city centre today. So they know.
Yeah, yeah. I'm planning to do...
Because I don't know if anyone that you have love affairs about, at least we're, we've made aware of the sergeant downstairs.
I think a lot of it, the security weren't too bad, there was a guy that come down and he was straight up like, no. But it's just, you know, I was like, he told me to come up here, so I was like, alright, I'll come up here and just double check. Because I was under the impression it was just, I've got all the things I need for it, so... It's just, it's allowed, it's legal, but he was like, come up here, and I was like, I'll just come up here, but... Because they work in the same building, I could just direct him possibly and just say, you know... I've had a chat with them and they've all confirmed it's all legal, but yeah. It's just, it's just good because a lot of people, it's obviously quite a new thing, drones flying. It's, you know, a lot of people don't know about the laws of it, so... Yeah, yeah, you see a tonne of people who don't actually know what they're doing, they just take it up straight away and it's like... I mean, I've had them quite a while, drones, I've flown drones a lot, but yeah. It's, this, this one I'm quite new to because it's my, I just got this one over Christmas, so... I'm still training, but I've done a few flights for this one and it's, it handles really well, but... The app I use for the flying as well, it doesn't let you go over 120 metres, it literally permits you, because it knows it's not legal, so it's just, it literally won't let you go any higher, it just stops, you know. Just, I don't know. That's great, thank you. Cheers, thank you. Yeah, alright, just had a chat with them and basically they've just confirmed that everything's legal and it's allowed to take place, so...
You need to show my boss again?
Yeah.
You want to phone him again?
Just let him know, basically, because it will be going up, but I was like, you know...
We'll see what he says.
He told me that Police Scotland are here, so I like, I'll double check them, but I kind of, I kind of knew it was allowed, but...
Right, okay.
I mean, police work the same building as him, so if he wants to get reassurance as well, you know, he could go over and chat, but...
What should we give him a phone again?
Yeah, no worries mate. Huh? Yeah, yeah, got plenty of them. I'm alright, so... I think though he was just thinking of the company that he employed possibly. It's different when you've got a bigger drone, but this one, 2.49 gram, so it's, the laws are really relaxed with them basically.
We had a mission with once, we, the guy, I used to work at the security. And the guy from, got up and doing the windows like that.
I'm not interested in windows, you know, I'm interested in the whole building, but...
Exactly, but just for security reasons, I want a lot of data. I'm not sure if it's the same here though, I don't know, I don't know the rules here.
But the thing is, it's like the security, they control the building and obviously the property. But the airspace is CAA controlled, so it's...
It's put your recording inside the window. But I mean, because there's a lot of computers and monitors.
Yeah, I can understand that, but it's like, you have to create privacy at the end of the day, but it's just, I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in building, that's it, so it's...
Yeah, but you kind of take your word on it.
I know you can't, but I mean, you know, I'm trying to protect the drone as well, I don't, I paid a lot of money for it, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to smash it off, you know, so going close to a building...
Yeah, I do know how you, the rules on you for that.
Yeah, yeah.
When it comes to drones, I know we've just got to, I've got to alert my boss.
Yeah, I know, but you've just got to follow the rules of what you're told to do, but he could have been told, he's saying he's supposed to tell someone higher up as well, but it's, that's the thing, you know, you get false information passed down.
It's a chain of command.
Yeah, it's exactly, Chinese whispers basically, you know, it's one of them, but it's... It's, I just wanted to get double checked with them because if he wants to ask them, you can go over and just say, have you spoke to them, you know, what's the rules on it, and if anyone else comes in, you know, it's basically...
Appreciate you.
As you said, they double checked with a sergeant, so the sergeant at the city basically, and they were like, it took a while, but they were basically saying... They were asking me the weight of the drone, which is correct, you should be asking that. Asking to see the operator ID, because that should be on the drone at all times if you're flying it, so it's like, use that number, alright?
So I've at least told you that you're allowed to fly it?
Aye, so it's, the airspace is CAA controlled, so basically, as long as I've got my operator's ID and everything, it's good to go really.
Okay, well, I spoke to Lee. Again, he says if that's what they're telling you, please yourself. But he didn't want you flying over the building because that's...
I mean, he's told me the bird of prey, but I get, yeah, so because he told me about that, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna do that because...
We're neither one of the two words. But he just didn't want it. Look there, anywhere you went, but just near, over the building or anywhere near it.
The thing is, it can come over the building. If I have line of sight, it is allowed because it's airspace controlled, so...
But he just didn't want, because all he's got to get from now on, well, if you do it, is staff constantly phoning, constantly phoning. And it will come just a big matter, then it doesn't have to be. Because staff will obviously look at the windows, or is it drone? And it'll just cause a lot of problems.
I mean, it's like I said, like what I said when I arrived, I planned to just stand out there and mostly just go straight up. I don't really want to go over because it's just too much hassle because, you know, I can't be bothered with it. I know, I'm not trying to cause hassle for you, but it's just, I wanted to do this building, so, you know, it's...
If you can get it as high as you can get it.
I can go 400 feet up, that's what I'm allowed to do.
And look and get a video?
That's the plan really, just to go up, but...
But as long as it doesn't come over the building, because it's just, it will cause a lot of problems.
It, it's allowed to, but you told me, he told me about bird of prey, so it's like, obviously...
Well, and sits up there in a tower.
I'm not, I'm not trying to pester that either, you know, that's the thing, I'm just...
Well, take your drone right down.
I know, I know. I was, I had airport permission, but I was doing it down near the river, River Don, and I was flying up there, going over this old abandoned building, and I had a massive storm, it just crows come out of nowhere, and I was like, they were way above me, but I was still like, right, I'm coming down, you know, I'm coming straight down, but one of them crashes into it. It's only, it's only light things that will just, will go straight out down, but... No, but, well, it's great, right, cheers, thank you. Not flying over, I've got to log it up, but take it off somewhere, go straight up. So far, like a day. So far, like a day.